Significant background noise, I don't know what that is.
Call this meeting to order.
Thank you. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Mic is muted.
Here. Can you hear me?
Yeah. We got you.
Yep.
Councilmember Harris.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Shanear.
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. A quorum has been established. Would the city manager please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic, which is our nation, our nation, our God.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening to everyone and to the members of the public. Welcome to the first city council meeting in history that has been held virtually. The city council and the city management, of course, have made the wise and important decision to try to set an example here. And we did not think it was appropriate, even with social distancing, for us to congregate together to hold the city's business. Instead, we are meeting virtually. We also made a deliberate decision to not cancel the city council meeting because the business of the city goes forward even in these difficult times. And we have a lot of business related to the coronavirus, of course, but also some city business that is crucial for the long term. Once we get beyond this, that we will take up this evening. And so, the public again is invited, I know in a very imperfect way, to participate by going to the city website and to submit your public comments through the city clerk. We already feeded a number of comments about some of the items on the agenda, and if it's possible, I don't know if it is possible, we might summarize some of what we have received. At least we will do our best. There is no closed session report. Let us start with the consent calendar. And, Mr. City Manager, I know you have an announcement or recommendation about the consent calendar.
So, yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. So, given the current crisis that we're dealing with, I'm making the recommendation that we continue the entire consent calendar to a later date, with the exception of the following items. Items one, four, six, eight, and nine. Everything else we'll take up at a later date. These are the ones that need to be heard tonight.
And the remainder, some of the remaining items involve fiscal decisions and city investments, and you thought, as the council thinks, that it's probably prudent to not go forward with those decisions tonight and wait at least a week to see, get a little better picture of the city's fiscal situation.
That's correct.
Okay, Howard, just one question. Number 16 is a reimbursement to the city of up to $300,000 from the SWOAH. Do we want to keep that one, since it's potentially revenue?
Well, we've talked to our staff on this one. They felt like this can get pushed a week.
Okay.
Okay, so I would make the motion on the consent calendar, consistent with-
So moved.
The manager's recommendation, moved by Councilmember Hanson.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Harris.
Yes, correct.
Are there any questions from members? You gotta put your hand up so that I can see you. No questions from members of the council. Please unmute your phone, your Zoom here for a moment. Let me say, all those in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Mayor.
We have to do a roll call.
Mr. Roll call, right?
We have to do a roll call. Thank you, Madam Clerk, of course.
Even though I could see you all, I still need to do a roll call vote. Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shanear?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. The consent calendar, at least those items described by the city manager, the motion made by Councilmember Hanson, seconded by Vice Mayor Harris, passes. Now let's go to our discussion items today, some public hearings. We've got weed and rubbish abatement.
Excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Jennings?
Mayor, my understanding was the consent calendar was passed, but they accept items of one, four, six, eight, and nine?
That's correct.
Yes, that's exactly right. The other items are continued a week.
Okay, so those items are all passed. I just wanted to be clarified.
Okay.
Good.
I just took the city manager's description and asked to make that the motion.
It works.
Okay, very good. Who's presenting, Mr. City Manager, on item 22?
I'm the new mayor, Jose Mendez, government enforcement manager.
Okay, give us a brief description, if you will, please.
Sure, I'm here to recommend that the council authorize the community development department to abate weeds, rubbish, dirt from properties constituting a public nuisance. We consider all objections and comments related to this item. I also wanted to note that the clerk's office received an objection to this item from a constituent that received our annual re-abatement notice because their parcel was identified as a vacant undeveloped lot that is now developed with a single-family residence. After further researching that request, we identified that 112 parcels that are on our current inventory are developed and we will be removing them.
Well, I guess this item shows that the businesses of the city goes forward even, again, in these very unique times. All right, thank you for that explanation. Is there a motion and a second on the item?
Move the item, Mayor.
Open and close the public hearing?
Yep. Please open and close the public hearing.
Done.
And then-
Seconded by Councilmember Hanson?
Sure.
Okay, let's call the roll on this item, please.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shanear?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Thank you all very much. That measure passes. The clerk filed 23 as just a pass for publication. There's no hearing or action, correct?
No, this has already been passed. This is an action.
Item number 23 is a public hearing.
I would pass for publication on the 10th of March. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would waive the staff presentation unless there's anything to read into the record, Mayor. Open and close the public hearing and make a motion to approve the item.
Second.
Okay, any questions? If not, was there public, did we receive public testimony on this item, just for the record?
I don't have public testimony on this item. Will you reiterate for me who moved and seconded the item?
I did, Madam Clerk. I opened and closed the public hearing and moved the item, assuming there was nothing to read into the record.
Councilmember Carr seconded it.
Thank you.
Okay, please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shanear?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. That measure passes unanimously. All right, the last two items were important, but the next two items are actually even more substantive and important. Number one is item 24, and this is the city's consideration of the Sacramento Transportation Authority's Measure A expenditure plan. Do we have a presenter on this?
Do.
Go ahead. Lucinda?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm Lucinda Wilcox with the Public Works Department. The item before you tonight is consideration of an expenditure plan for the Sacramento Transportation Authority for a half-cent supplemental sales tax to fund transportation facilities and services. I'm going to introduce Will Kempton, who is the executive director of the STA, and he'll be making the presentation today, and I'll also be here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Lucinda, for your hard work. Mr. Kempton, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Let me start my presentation by thanking your staff, Ryan Moore and Lucinda Wilcox, who have been immensely helpful in getting through a difficult process. So, do I just hit it? No.
We see ya.
Okay, so we have a slide here that, and I'm gonna move rather quickly unless you stop me with questions, Mr. Mayor and members. We built the plan starting last year. We had a pretty significant outreach effort involving more than 150 organizations. We held detailed meetings with an ad hoc committee of the STA board and met with a professional advisory group that consisted of a number of state board directors and senior staff from the recipient agencies. And we actually held five separate STA board meetings to take public input. The process is that you're being presented, after the authority tentatively approved the expenditure plan last week, we're presenting it to all of the cities and the Board of Supervisors because the Public Utilities Code requires a majority of the city council, representing a majority of the county's incorporated population, as well as the Board of Supervisors. Then, once we get those approvals, assuming we do, we will take the ordinance and the expenditure plan to the STA Board of Directors, and they will presumably adopt and implementing ordinance by two-thirds vote. Then, the next step will be presenting the ordinance to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to place it on the ballot. And obviously, if it goes forward in November, the measure must be approved by at least two-thirds of the electorate.
Is that-
So, here's an overview of the county's Measure A expenditure plan. It's a total of $8.4 billion, and these are the major categories of funding, and you can see them going down the list. I think it's important to note that 60% of the funding is going for streets and roads, and 40% roughly going to transit. Having problems. Leave it to me to have problems with it.
You're fine.
Okay.
You've got an overview of the plan on the screen here.
Now I'm on to the, this is, what we've done is, we asked our consultants to see if they couldn't figure out a way to demonstrate what the total benefits of the program were to the local jurisdictions. Everybody knows what they're gonna get in the way of direct allocations, but we made an effort to try to divide up, for example, SACRT, maintenance and operations. That benefits all of the jurisdictions in Sacramento County. And so, we tried to assign a benefit. This is a very rough cut of those benefits to the city of Sacramento, and we estimate about $2.5 billion of the program will be going to the benefit of the city of Sacramento. You have a list of local projects and programs that are included in what we call transformative system improvements. They're listed here. These projects are all eligible for funding from the local street and road portion of the program after you satisfy- These projects are all eligible, uh, for funding from the local street and road portion of the, of the program after, uh, you satisfy requirements for, uh, maintenance and rehabilitation of local roads. Here's a remainder of those lists, uh, from active transportation down to parking facilities. Uh, we also have a category called local projects of regional significance, this is seven hundred million dollars made available over the forty-year life of the program. Um, and the projects that, uh, the city of Sacramento has identified and included in that program are listed on that slide. And you can see there are continuation there. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report, we request your support for the resolution to approve the transportation expenditure plan for the proposed twenty-twenty transportation sales tax ballot measure. I'm happy to answer any question.
Okay, thank you first of all, Will, for your hard work, um, I know getting to this point has not been easy. I also want to thank not only our city staff, Ryan and Lucinda, as you did, but also the city appoint, city council appointees to the STA who worked long and hard over more than a year to help craft, uh, what I think is a very solid measure. I want to hear from them, uh, because, uh, they deserve to be heard first here on, on this with their questions and comments. I'll start with the Vice Mayor, Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I appreciate this very much. Uh, you may know that I was Chair of the STA Board of Directors when we first appointed the committee to look into, uh, doing outreach for this measure. And subsequently, we augmented that committee, so we had representatives from all the jurisdictions in the area to look at this. I won't speak at length, but I, I would like to say this, that over the course of sixteen months, we forged, I think, the best compromise that could be reached with all the disparate needs of the various jurisdictions. And of course, all of these projects are essential to our region, road repair, bridges, transportation, uh, RT, all of these things will make us a stronger region. I think this is a great measure to bring forward to the voters. Now, of course, we're in a period of economic stress and great uncertainty, but we don't have a timeframe for that. And we don't know what the outcome will be, but we should not neglect this or delay it, because if the outcome proves reasonably positive with COVID-nineteen, uh, this is a measure that really needs to be considered by the voters. I'd also like to thank you, Mayor, for coming into the discussion late with what I think was a great change to the ordinance. Uh, that makes us comply with the MTP-SES goals for climate change. I think it was a really valuable addition to the final product. This is, I think, the best piece of work that we could have arrived at, and I would like to move acceptance of the TEP by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, let's hear from Councilman Chenier.
No, I, I think, um, Councilmember or Vice Mayor Harris said it well, this was a lot of work by a lot of people over a year. This is not gonna be easy, and, and we'll have to decide whether or not November is the right timeframe, but as far as the plan goes, um, uh, it's much better than Measure B was, uh, and it's much better because we took a different process, we worked as, as, uh, Jeff said, we worked for well over a year and talked to everybody quite a bit. So, I don't think there's anyone in the city of Sacramento who could reasonably say they didn't have a chance to engage on this and provide their opinions and provide their opinions, they did on multiple occasions, as we know. So, um, you know, I, I think that's good, I, I'm really particularly excited about the forty percent that's going to public transit, I think. Uh, Henry Lee and Regional Transit have done just a fabulous job turning that organization around and are moving very quickly in the right direction as a national model of transportation agencies. And this is really gonna provide the support that they need, um, to, to continue to move forward to replace their fleets and go forward. I also want to say on the MTP and the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and on our climate goals, uh, they're, they're reaching our nineteen percent reduction in greenhouse gases, it's dependent on this plan passing. So this is something that I think we all, as a city, we obviously want to move it forward, or I want to move it forward, um, I'm gonna second Jeff's motion. But as a city and, and a bunch of electives, we need to go out and help pass this whenever it gets to the ballot. Um, because we're really dependent on it for the region to be what we need it to be.
Thank you, Jay, let's hear from Councilmembers Gata, Hanson, Ashby, and Carr, if, if you want, Councilmember Gata?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, one, I, I also wanted to, to thank, uh, you for, uh, coming in at the tail end here and helping address, uh, uh, I think a critical component uh, with that piece and the sixty-forty split. Um, not only that, but I want to highlight that off the top, we did a number of, of, of components that's different than Measure B where we looked at, uh, supporting the intermodal facility, creating the regional mobility center to address, um, not only job creation and zero emission technology, but also looking at future, uh, research on congestion reduction, uh, and, uh, supporting the air quality management district. And, uh, I think that's a, a, a critical piece here, because all of those pieces, reducing congestion, making it easier for people who are moving between our regions uh, and addressing air quality is, is critical. And if anything, we've learned right now, making sure we're doing whatever we can to address the, our, uh, uh, healthy, healthy individuals, our healthy lungs, the number of kids getting, uh, asthma growing up and, uh, our current state with COVID-nineteen, this is an important piece to be thinking about air quality for the long term. And lastly, again, uh, much like the regional mobility center, but this will provide an opportunity for some real jobs over the long term. Uh, whether it's in November or when we, when we decide to put this together, uh, these are gonna be real hard jobs that are gonna be employing people here locally to address the number one issue of reducing congestion and improving our air quality. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate working with all my colleagues on the STA.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Hanson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, I just wanted to add a few things. One, uh, our staff worked extremely hard, Ryan, Lucinda, and, and many others, in combination with Norm Humm, who's since retired from STA. And I just personally want to thank Will Kempton, he got recruited into this as a retired Newton, and I think, uh, really brought all of his skillset as a former, um, Executive Director for a similar organization, his former head of Caltrans, and really, Will, you've done a phenomenal job, uh, trying to bring agreement across a broad, uh, collection of sectors and jurisdictions. As the council members, in September, we did a workshop, and we directed our staff to work to ensure that this plan, uh, reflected cities' needs and, uh, that it would be climate-friendly. We came back and we did more work on that, and, uh, one of the people who deserves a great amount of congratulations here is, uh, in the last few weeks, the mayor spent a considerable amount of his personal time working to, uh, close out one of the last biggest issues. And Mayor, I, I, I just want to thank you for your leadership, working with the stakeholders, joining the STA board, and, uh, participating in conversation. As much as we are in a very strange time where, uh, literally the roads are empty and people aren't sure exactly what it all means, I, I would like to add, in addition to the fact that I believe this is the most climate-friendly initiative that we're going to get as a regional priority list. I also think that this could function, depending on what happens, as a economic stimulus tool, if the voters end up passing it, whether it's in this November or a different November, because, uh, we will need to make these repairs, as Councilmember Vice Mayor Harris said. We will need to make these investments in transit and air quality into the American River Parkway, which is prioritized in this plan. And, uh, I think finally, it's important for council members and the public to know that if the city council, if the city council of Sacramento doesn't advance this today, then the, um, ability to put this on the ballot is foreclosed, because it is required under state law that, um, a majority of the population pass it, and it's been determined that the city of Sacramento is, um, a critical jurisdiction for allowing this conversation to move forward. So, I'm in support of moving the conversation forward, there's obviously a lot still to evolve related to the external situation of COVID-nineteen and where we, where, where we're gonna end up. Um, the last thing I would just add is if there is a major economic stimulus from the state and federal government aimed at public works projects, we would be well-positioned to leverage our local money with that money to make some of our long-held priorities finally happen, and so I'm also in support. And to thank the, and to thank the community, a lot of community stakeholders worked on this, a lot of advocates. And while it may not be everything they would have hoped for, I think this represents significant progress because of their participation. Thanks, Mayor.
Excellent work, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yeah, I'm not on STA, so I'm not as familiar with the in-depth projects as, as those of you who are serving on that board, but, uh, I do know that there are a lot of effort has gone into making sure that this plan meets our climate action goals, which is incredibly important to all of us. I have some concerns about when we get to November, whether or not this will be our priority, but I agree that it needs to be, it needs to clear this hurdle, so we can at least consider it when it gets to be time to determine what to vote on in November. I sure hope that we are way past where we are now and that our biggest problem is whether or not this passes. Uh, but for tonight, for sure, it's a yes, and then as we get closer to November, maybe we can review, uh, support or non-support of the item.
So, final comment, if I may, uh, I want to thank all of you, because as Councilmember Harris said, this was a sixteen-month process, and there were a lot of difficult negotiations that went into this even before I got involved in the last couple of weeks. And the product that you had all put together was a very, very good plan, it included and still includes forty percent set aside for public transit, which is necessary to meet our nineteen percent goal. Uh, my piece at the end, I think, was important, because it assures that for any projects that are in the transportation plan that aren't yet in the region's climate plan, that there must be conformity. And if a project, um, increases GHG emissions, that it has to mitigate those impacts, which is just, um, I don't want to say, well, I would say common sense in a way, but it ensures that the region's work of defining a clear climate target is consistent with the largest counties in the region's transportation plans. So I'm very pleased, and we're in land, and I would just say technically, that the, the, the conformity piece is in the expenditure plan, it's not yet in the ordinance. So as it goes back to the STA, uh, I would hope that the expenditure language would be, would be put into the ordinance so that there is actual, uh, conformity, since the expenditure plan lasts ten years, uh, while the ordinance lasts forty. Finally, and I want to thank the members of the other jurisdictions in the county who, um, also had to make difficult choices, not just the last couple of weeks, but over the sixteen months, um, they've done a great job from all of the cities and the county, and, and our county representatives. And so, they deserve a big round of applause as well. Finally, I want to address the political question that a few of you have raised. I know the conventional wisdom, as we sit here today in the midst of the coronavirus, is that there is no way that the voters would approve by a two-thirds supermajority such a tax measure. Don't be so sure, because, um, when we get through this, and as we get through the summer and the fall, the most important thing that we may be called upon to do as leaders is to support and encourage real economic stimulus and job creation. And so this may be a signature opportunity to invest eight billion dollars in Sacramento County's transportation future. And whatever it may look like today, it may, we don't know yet, it may look very different when our need is to rebuild the economy like never before. So I just want to say for myself, I am all in today and tonight, and I will be all in throughout this entire process to do everything I can as Mayor of the city to help, uh, pass this, to talk to our city voters about the essential investments, not only in transit, but in roads, and how we are leading on climate, and to the remainder of the county, same message tailored to your particular jurisdiction, there is a lot in here for everybody to support. And so, uh, it may seem like odd timing, but in many ways, doing what we're doing tonight is actually the right time. Let's call the roll on the measure, please.
Does Councilmember Carr have a final comment?
I'm sorry, Larry, did I miss you?
You did.
I apologize.
I just wanted to add a couple, I, I sat on this board for over five years, and I was happy to relinquish my seat to you, um, there, because your voice was needed to, to get. Uh, on this particular, we had people from every city in the county as well as the county supervisors. And the views on transportation is very different depending on where you sit. There are people on the STA board who only want to do fixed roads, there are people who only want to do, uh, public transportation. Uh, there are people who want to expand roadways, so it's a really heavy lift to get to a point where we have some consensus to move forward. Uh, it's gonna take all of us, uh, working together in all the jurisdictions to make that happen. But even with this, when we sat through the meetings where we looked at all of the unmet transportation needs, even with Measure A passing, there's still gonna be quite a bit of need out there, uh, in the transportation arena for our county. So I urge my council members, my fellow elected representatives, to push this as hard as you can, if it goes on in November, or if it goes on after that. We need this, but even with this, we need even more, so let's push this across the land, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carr, sorry to, uh, pass you up, if we were in person, I would have seen your hand, there we go.
I, I will blame it on your head and not your heart.
Okay, thank you, all right, uh, would the clerk please call the roll, it's been moved and seconded?
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Emphatically, yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Yes.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. That's a unanimous vote, take that back, Will.
Mayor members?
Thank you very much, everybody, all right, um, I'm going to ask without objection, that we take up, uh, if I can wind up here just for a moment, excuse me. That we take up item twenty-six before we take up item twenty-five, this is the, uh, the two point two million dollars from this, uh, passed by the legislature in the last two weeks to assist us with our homeless efforts during the coronavirus crisis. Um, is there a presentation, Emily Halken is here, hi, Emily. Uh, you want to unmute yourself there? There you go, you're on now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hi, Mr. Mayor and Council, um, as the mayor stated, this is a report to allow us to immediately access two point four million dollars from the state being allocated to address the homeless, uh, homelessness crisis and the COVID crisis. Um, this is being allocated directly to the city through the half-allocation process, the county and the continuum of care receiving, um, amounts as well. And we're working collaboratively with them right now to develop an expenditure plan that'll focus on expanding shelters to accommodate folks with symptoms or at high risk, to increase motelling options, and also to support some services and trailers that we're expecting to come from the state any day now. Um, tonight's approval will allow us to very quickly turn around the documents the state, which we received last night at five-thirty, and hopefully get the, the funds, um, within the next week. So if they have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but.
I would only add, Emily, that in the days ahead, as early as tomorrow, we will have a fuller report to the entire community on not only how we intend to spend that money, but what our overall plan is to hopefully bring more than hundreds of people, uh, indoors, uh, as quickly as possible to respond to the public health crisis.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions, can I get a motion then, please?
So, second?
I'm not sure who said it, but.
Eric was the.
By serious council members.
Eric was the motion.
Eric.
And I, and, and I was the second, yeah.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mindy, you muted yourself, but aye.
Mindy, there you go.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah.
Councilmember Warren?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata? Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
That again passes unanimously. Let us go back now to our final item of the night. And that is the temporary moratorium on evicting tenants to potentially include commercial tenants. Mr. Jasso?
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm also joined with Peter Lemos in the room, our chief, and Matt Ruyak from the City Attorney's Office, who are instrumental in moving this forward. So the item before you today is in follow-up to council's direction last week. The item before you tonight is an emergency ordinance to enact amendments to the tenant eviction moratorium, which was adopted last week, making the following changes. It expands the moratorium to include commercial tenants in addition to residential tenants, which is consistent with Governor's Executive Order N-2820 and other cities in California which have taken similar type measures such as San Francisco, San Diego, and Fresno. It clearly states that no late fees should be charged as part of the repayment of these deferred rent payments during the moratorium period. All other requirements of the ordinance approved last week will continue to apply, including that tenants must notify their landlords ahead of time regarding their inability to make full payment specifically due to the COVID-19 impacts. Commercial tenants provide documentation of such impacts and tenants having 120 days after the governor lifts the protections under Executive Order N-2820, which currently runs through May 31 of 2020, to pay any deferred payments. The city continues to encourage all tenants to make timely rent payments as they are able to and only to use this protection as last resort. We also encourage tenants and landlords to independently make appropriate arrangements that balance the payment of rent with the need to keep as much payroll in effect as possible during this difficult time. In a recent survey of local businesses conducted as part of our Small Business Emergency Relief Loans, 46% of 626 business respondents said making rent payment was their highest priority and two-thirds identified as either their second or first highest priority. Furthermore, the City of Sacramento, like many cities in the state and around the country, has and will continue to advocate for lender relief for impacted residential and commercial property owners at both the state and federal levels. Staff thanks the City Attorney's Office, most specifically Matt Ruyak, for their timely work on this ordinance and collectively were available to answer any questions from council. Thank you.
Very good. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Hanson in his district. Most of these, most of these issues brought is certainly not all of them. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Michael. Thank you for, Susanna and her team for working on this. I think that the council is well aware that we've been moving swiftly as a city to try to get ahead of some issues in launching our $1 million Small Business Loan Fund. One of the things that we didn't anticipate at the time was the shelter in place order, which is now in effect. And what is really going on is in the small business world, whether it's retail, whether it's restaurants, and many nonprofits actually, their life is flashing before their eyes. And what we're seeing is, well, larger tenants, usually in Class A office space, government entities, healthcare providers, large corporations, they're going to be able to pay their rent because they have other sources of income. Many of these small businesses are extremely fragile. As we've worked hard to build the creative economy in our region and to become the former forecastal, much of that is seeming to fall apart in front of people's eyes right now. And while we are working to encourage restaurants, people to still get takeout and to order deliveries, there's so much that we can achieve. And I think a great indicator of that was our Small Business Loan Fund, which within 48 hours of the applications being open, we received 3,000 folks who started applications. 1,800 of them completed them. And while we wait for the federal and state governments to take action to bring more substantive relief to businesses, this is a short-term way without having to spend more city money to buy time essentially for these small businesses to be able to see if they can survive their shutdowns, the closures, the diminishment in business to get through to the other side. And I know we've received a lot of public comment, particularly from Restaurants at Risk. And you can see those in the portal. And all of us probably have heard as well from commercial property owners who are concerned. I just want to underscore a couple of things that Michael said. One is that this isn't going to allow them to avoid paying those rent payments, but allow them to have a delay in in any fallout from not being able to make those payments, which should help them with payroll, to keep employees on. It should engage them in conversations proactively with landlords and banks to figure out how to spread some of these costs out over a longer period of time. A lot of our local landlords, we've heard from our local commercial property owners, they're engaging with their tenants because they don't want their tenants to go out of business. And ultimately, as we saw from the last recession, when we lost a lot of these street-level retailers, restaurants, and otherwise, it took a very long time to get them back. So what we're just doing is buying time here. I think our local landlords are already working with their tenants to keep them in place. But this is a more official way to ensure that those conversations happen and that we are continuing not only to protect tenants and residential properties, but also commercial tenants. And I think that this will help provide some sense of relief and hope for a lot of them. Last thing I'd say is, you know, we've heard and seen some information recently that many of these businesses may not come out of this COVID-19 crisis as viable entities. But I do think the vast majority want to come out on the other end. They want to rehire their employees or keep them. They want to pay their bills. They stake their whole lives on these particular entities. And this is the least we can probably do in the meantime till these other resources come through to help them. So I know this is a big decision and I'm hoping our colleagues support it and I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Before I turn it to, before I turn it to the councilors, I just want to add one relevant fact here as the conversation proceeds. Over the weekend, I had several conference calls with both our community banks as well as a number of our state and multi-state banks, our larger commercial banks. And I asked this question of them. Are you willing to forbear your owners who cannot pay their mortgage because their tenants may not be able to pay their owners timely? And uniformly, I didn't take a poll, but uniformly, the sentiment on the call is that they would. And in fact, they're developing procedures to ensure that they give the owners a break as well. Now, I know that's voluntary, but I think it should give some assurance to our property owners that in passing this measure tonight, if we do pass it, that they're not going to get the short end while we figure all this out. The other thing I would say is that while this is a 90-day ordinance, there is no reason why we can't review this in 30 days. And then 30 days later, and to take it off the books if the crisis has stabilized. But doing it for 90 now means we don't have to necessarily come back and revote every 30 days. So I prefer it this way. But I just wanted to take about that conversation with a number of the lead bankers who have their own bottom lines, they have their own liquidity challenges. But they're also very sympathetic to what their owners are going through and what the owner's tenants are going through. All right.
Mayor, I forgot a little bit of staff direction. So if you'll indulge me, I know Mr. Carr seconded already. But one of the questions that did come in from some of the P-bids was whether Mr. Jasso could have Economic Development staff work with the property owners to ensure that we are coordinating the state and federal response and to get that information that you were talking about more readily. So I just like to ask Economic Development to do that.
That's fine. Okay, Larry, secondor in the motion, Councilman Carr.
With the.
Larry? You're on.
I'm on. I still second the motion and I agree with the direction. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
That was it.
Okay, well, that was brief. Good. Councilmember Ashby, Mayor Protem Ashby.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, Mayor, your comments are sort of my only concerns on this. I think this is a really important thing that we're doing and I'm glad we're getting the language across here, too. I think 90 days is good. Michael, did you say it? What's the starting date?
It's, I think it's effective on adoption, but yes, that's correct, effective on adoption.
Okay. So I mean, this is mostly going to just start for people in April. And then we could always come back in June, like the mayor said. But Mayor, I think your comments on how people who have mortgages are affected or how the owners are affected is just worth noting and probably something we might have to follow up on. Just gauge, I guess. I guess my point is, Michael, we need your help to gauge that as it becomes an issue and then be able to circle back to some of the folks that the mayor and others have spoken with that could help us impact this on the other side of things. I fully agree with the item and will support it. I just want to make sure we don't miss something, you know, as we're trying to hurry and bring relief here, that we don't create another problem on the other side. And that if we do, that we're just as swift to come back and take that up as well. And I believe the mayor has given us some good sort of preliminary ways we could go about that, but we may need to advance that in the days to come. I don't know.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Protem. Councilman Warren?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I come at this, you know, trying to be balanced in my analysis and really understanding that housing, being critical as it is, the need to act very quickly in terms of this policy that we put in place for residential is really essential and it's a public safety issue and it also would, could potentially exacerbate, you know, the problem in homelessness. As a relation to business and business owners, I think we're moving too quickly. I think as you have heard mentioned that we could come back, you know, in a week or two or whatever and make the decision to change it. You know, I think it's going to be very difficult to do that. I think we should have went the other way. I think we should have given the landlords and the tenants the opportunity to voluntarily work through the issues and to really see what types of challenges they are continuing to have. People, I believe, are very scared. And there will be people that can pay that won't pay because they're concerned about other issues. And but we really have taken the leverage and the opportunity for landlords to be gracious and really wanting to help work through the problem. I think we're going to create more of a challenge and particularly without having the lenders at the table. In my opinion, this should be a lender-owner-tenant mutual process. It doesn't work if any one of the three does not agree. It will not work. If the lenders do not agree with what we're doing, they can say all they, you know, they can say a lot. But when the rubber meets the road, if it doesn't follow through, it's going to be a huge problem. If the owners do not comply or agree, it's going to be a huge problem. And therefore, and also the tenants. And I think this could have been an opportunity for us to to work through this issue with the three affected parties. I think we're moving too quickly on this mandatory situation. I understand the sensitivity. I understand the urgency. I understand that it is going to give some relief. But we're going to also see, I think on the other hand, we're going to see some major issues. And there are people, I've heard from a number of property owners, just as I did from residential property owners. I've not heard from very many tenants and I know that the majority of those impacted will be downtown in Sacramento, you know, in Sacramento and Steve and Jeff's district and in Angelique's districts. So I understand what we're trying to do. I just think it could have been worked through differently. And I think it would have been more effective if we would have had the three interest parties together and made a decision that everybody had a little skin in the game. Right now, I don't see it being that right now. You're forcing property owners to have the skin in the game. And the lenders have not made a commitment. They could make some, and undoubtedly some will. Some, and just like in the Great Recession, some of the lenders were better at it than others. Some banks are not as strong as others, therefore they can't do some of the things that some of the other banks will do. I can see that there's going to be some fallout unless we could have gotten the lenders at the table with the property owners. And then we could have made, I think, a stronger case to give tenant relief. But I just see this as being a challenge. So I'm not going to support this ordinance. And I've stated my reasons. I'm hopeful that it works out for the best. But I think there is another way that this could be done and it didn't have to be done, you know, as quickly as we did the program for residential because I thought that was extremely sensitive and more essential. And property owners would have been more likely to evict. I don't see that as happening with commercial. So that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you for laying it out, Councilman Warren. Vice Mayor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Councilmember Warren, I think raises a very important point that we certainly don't want the effect of forestalling evictions to be causing foreclosures. And I really appreciate you reaching out to the banks and a verbal commitment on their, well, not a commitment. That's really the essence of the problem. We don't have a commitment that, as well as stopping evictions, that we can't forestall foreclosures. So I'm a little hesitant about this one, too. I know the effect that we're looking for is to support small business and that's critical. But it doesn't do anybody any good if commercial property owners lose their property. So I think we agree on all that. I can support this measure, but I think we absolutely have to reevaluate after 30 days when we can see what happens between the property owners and the tenants. I agree with Steve, very much so that it's not in the property owner's interest to cause an eviction on their own. And they might be able to work this all out, but to Alan's point, they need the cooperation of the lenders on the property. So I'll support this today, but I would like a commitment and maybe in the form of direction from the motion maker that we reevaluate in 30 days to see what kind of deals can be made between the property owners and their tenants.
I think that's a friendly amendment, Councilman Hanson. You agree?
Yeah, there are two things I'd like to clarify for everyone. This runs only during the pendency of our declared emergency. So it won't run beyond that. Mayor, you mentioned 90 days. But only during the course of this COVID-19 emergency, is this effective? And once the emergency ends, which we're all hopeful it's much sooner than the May 31 that the governor's order has, then I think we'll begin to see that turnaround. I will happily accept that direction to revisit this in 30 days. But the other thing I just think it's important is, as I understand it, and maybe staff can clarify, vacant properties and the losses on not receiving that income or the vacancy, that comes out as a tax loss. So for some of the very large property owners, not our mom and pop local folks, they just write off those losses and then they get tax relief in the future for that. And so it's not quite as straightforward as, you know, they don't want a vacancy. We've seen in other cities where vacancies are actually part of a large financing strategy to write off income. And so it's not, I don't think that's the case for many of the property owners we're thinking about, but it is an issue. So happy to take that direction, assuming the secondor takes it.
Yeah. And when I said 90 days, that's the estimated time, at least by some, of when life might return to some form of normal. Okay, are there any other questions? Councilman Schneer?
Can I chime in? Councilmember Carr, do you approve that amendment?
I sure do.
Okay. Very good. Councilman Chenier? You're muted.
Oh, sorry. No, I'm not muted.
No, you're not.
No, I heard today everything will be fine by Easter and the churches will be packed, so. Yeah, I, I just, I, I want to support Alan and Jeff on this. I, I'm willing to vote for this because this is a critical time. We absolutely should come back in thirty days. I, I would hope also that within that time period, we can continue, or Mayor, if you can continue to have conversation with the banks. The ripple effect is upward and I'm not worried as much about large commercial property owners. I am worried about the smaller ones. They're just gonna be put in a, in a hole. I mean, the, the folks who can't pay aren't gonna pay anyway. So that might be the same whether we can evict them or not. And I don't see anybody else starting a business during this time. So the practical part of this is that, you know, it may be the same impact and the same effect at the end of the day. But I definitely want to support the thirty-day look at this and, and see what we can do. I'd also want to see, and Michael, maybe this is something you guys, your folks can look at as we go forward. Is it, should this be one-size-fits-all? Downtown certainly has a lot of businesses, a lot of ground floor businesses, that's one thing. It's different in, in some of the other districts. And I don't know that we may want to look at this differently for different places. That's something that we could talk about as well. But hopefully thirty days does it and we're, we're out of this and moving forward. So I, I will support it. And Jeff, thank you for that mandatory thirty-day look. I think that's important.
Very good. Councilman Geta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree with Jay. In my district, it's, it's mostly a, a combination of small property owners and, and small businesses or tenants. And so they're, they're kind of intertwined in, in that, that same struggles. So I, I'm glad for the thirty days and I can support it for that reason. The other thing, if, separate and aside from this, if, if we can get also a report back on whatever's happening on, on lending and a relief act. I, I read briefly, I think last night, that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac on the housing side is looking at a relief package. So if the staff could come back on that from information for us as we move forward to the next challenge that we'll face, I'd greatly appreciate that.
That's on residential.
Correct. Chris, that's on the residential side, yeah.
Yeah, and Mayor, if I could add one thing really quickly too, is if the federal relief package does something for these types of, of renters, I would want to come back even quicker.
Yeah, correct. That way we don't supply, continue that, that, the trickle chain, the domino effect.
Right.
Any change circumstance from the federal stimulus or federal or protection or state protection, any kind will come back earlier than thirty days. And remember, this relief, both on the residential side and the commercial side, is only for the inability to pay rent due to the coronavirus. So if somebody has a pre-existing problem paying the rent, they're not necessarily going to be able to use this particular protection to be able to avoid eviction. So it's got, there's gotta be a cause and effect here. And, and it's, it's narrowly tailored in the appropriate way.
Well, but I, I would push back a little bit on that because this, what's going on is affecting every retail business in the city other than grocers.
That's true.
So you're gonna be able to move your money around to make it look like this is happening. It's, it's gonna hurt people, there's no question.
No doubt. Okay. Please call the roll on the motion as amend in a friendly way more than once. Vice Mayor, do you have one other thing? Go ahead, Mindy.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. That measure passes eight to one. Thank you. Thank you all very much. The city manager has a brief report here. City manager?
I have a quick report out in the city managers' reports section and a recommendation I'm going to read. Pursuant to the Sacramento City Code requiring the council to review every fourteen days the need to continue the city's emergency declaration, I recommend we continue to keep the declaration in place.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, we do not.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think that's an appropriate recommendation. Are there council ideas and questions? Certainly no events to announce.
Mr. Mayor, I, I do have one thing I'd like to say.
Yes.
Thank you. You know, Pops in the Park is now in question. And of course, you know, it's, it's a pretty big deal for District Three to put on those events. I'd just like to tell my constituents that I haven't taken this off the table yet and we are looking into the possibility of a virtual presentation of the Pops concerts. If in fact, this crisis continues into June, and it's certainly quite possible that it might, I'll have to make a, a up or down decision on whether to pursue Pops probably within the next week. But we will be looking at the possibility of a virtual presentation. So I just wanted to make people aware of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. A couple of things for me. Number one, I, I want to ask each of the members, if you can please get out the donate for Sacramento information to all your various contacts and social media sites. We're off to a great start. Thank you again, Councilmember Chenier. And let's keep raising the money there. The other thing I just want to say to the people of Sacramento, we are getting mostly, in fact overwhelmingly positive reports about people's compliance with the state and the county order. Now is not the time to let up and to relax back into what we also desperately want is normal life. Let's keep doing what we are doing here for the next week or even two weeks. And all of the experts tell us that that gives us a much better chance to save lives and to keep people healthy. So please, I miss you all. We all miss each other, but let's stay distant. And as tonight shows, we can still conduct the people's business. And I thought it was a pretty darn good meeting, so.
Mayor, Mayor, I forgot one thing, I'm sorry.
Of course.
If you'll indulge. Mr. City Manager, we've been getting a lot of concerns about parking enforcement with the stay-at-home order. I'd like you to report back to the mayor and council as soon as possible on recommendations to modify enforcement in residential areas. We still have a very strong concern that city services be provided, trash pickup, and that those trashcans not block the bike lanes to ensure that there is pedestrian, there is bike safety. But if, if you can work with your team to figure out what the appropriate ways to modify enforcement are to ensure that voluntary compliance with street services, city services on street can be accommodated, that would be very helpful to our residents.
Will do.
That's very good. Councilmember Ashby?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank all my colleagues, but particularly Councilmember Garrett and the mayor. We propped up the childcare program this week and, or I guess we did it last week. But I wanted you guys to know that as of Monday, it was nearly full. There are still about twenty or more, twenty-eight, I think, slots open. There are eight childcare centers across the city in community centers being run by our fourth R-staff, which is great because, you know, they are not able to work in the schools now. And we also brokered a relationship with Child Action and they put out fifty vouchers for us. Those can go to anybody who needs help, low-income folks who are working. And they're running their referral lines. So if you guys get calls from people who say they need help with childcare and maybe our spots are full or they aren't first responders or they aren't medical workers or they aren't essential city staff, they can still call Child Action to help find a open childcare center that would help them. And the YMCA also opened sixty spots for us at their W Street site. The difference between their program and ours, one is it costs, ours does not. And theirs does drop down though to include infants. The program that we opened up is for kids kindergarten through sixth grade. And it's free and it is focused on first responders, essential city staff and medical folks, people on the front line for patient care. Really proud of the program, really proud of our team. And I know everybody's working on lots of things and we're all pulling in the same direction, but proud to get that one up and going with some help there. And, and then I also just wanted to say how proud I am of city staff. I'm, I'm proud of our firefighters and police officers, but I'm especially proud of people that are, you know, have been deemed essential for one of the first times ever, like park maintenance workers. You know, those guys are out there trying really hard to keep the parks super nice because they know it's the one spot that people can still go. And if you notice, they're pristine right now because there's so much pride in their, in their positions. And the garbage is still getting picked up and the recycle's still getting picked up. And those are our employees and they have families and they have fears too. And they're going to work every day for us and for our constituents and for this city. And I'm just really proud of them. I'm proud of all the executive staff that are running around, whether at home or in virtual meetings on a million Zooms. We've all figured out how to use this platform now. Everyone's trying their best. Everyone is giving it their all to see how they can help our city. And I'm just really proud to be a part of that team with all of you and with all of our amazing employees. And then lastly, I just want to say how proud I am of Sacramentoans. This is ridiculously hard. I've been on this council for a decade and I've never seen anything like it. Not in fires, not in budgets or recessions. This is incredible. I mean, everybody, including my own son, that works in a bar in Midtown is now laid off. Every, every one of them, every bar in Midtown. It's twenty years that it took for councilmembers Cone and Hanson collectively to rebuild Midtown and it's shuttered. So I'm, but I'm proud of Sacramento because I know people are driving all over to continue supporting those businesses. And they're doing their best to socially distance. And there's so much stress on parents right now trying to teach at home and work from home and, and know all these rules and follow everything that's being given out as guidance. And I'm just incredibly proud of how everybody's pulling together to try to figure it out. So honored to be a part of the group right now and, and really proud of my city.
Bravo, Angelique. Thank you for saying it so well and the childcare stand-up was, was just great. Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get the last word and I'm going to adjourn this meeting in honor, not just of the first responders, but, but for all of our healthcare workers who are on the front lines and whose life over the next week to ten days to two weeks is going to be very, very, very challenging. And we are all working to try to get from as many sources as possible, as much personal protective equipment and, and doing all the little and big things together to try to help them. But they deserve our special recognition and our prayers tonight for the week and two weeks ahead. If there's nothing further to come before the city council, we will stand in adjournment. Thank you.